The four impugned commissioners had at Serena Hotel. And you are saying that their press statement and that of Raile Odinga, the Asimio presidential candidate at the time, were similar. And that you, because they were similar, you, you say then they must have been working in consonance. Is that so? My clarification is, would it be possible, would it be conceivable that people can also naturally think in a similar way? Especially when they are addressing a similar issue? That it is possible for people even without talking to think in a similar manner? Number two, you have also stated that the commissioners were proxies of external forces in your petition. What evidence, what evidence do you have to demonstrate that they were actually proxies of external forces? What evidence? Other than just a mere allegation, what evidence do you have that they were forces of external forces? And finally, on the question of incompetence. Incompetence is one of the grounds contemplated in Article 251 in terms of when you want to remove an commissioner of an independent, of a constitutional body or an independent office. And I'm happy, at the end of your presentation, you have referred us to the specific paragraphs in your petition that speak to the, the grounds that you rely on. One of the paragraphs that you have referred us in terms of incompetence is paragraph 10 of your petition, I don't know. And paragraph 10 says, "The four commissioners appointed a law firm to act for the commissioners against..." Blah, 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 blah. So, my question is, how does appointing a law firm? How is it, how is it, how does appointing a law firm become incompetence? Where is the connection? I have appointed a law firm, by appointing a law firm, do I become incompetent? Thank you very much.
Yes? Honorable Michael Musira from Ujor Rock.
Thank you Chair, mine is just one. With, with regard to paragraph 10, about the four commissioners appointing the, appointing, procuring, procuring the services of a law firm to represent them in a court of law. I would like a clarification on what would be the right procedure about appointment of the service providers to provision of these services to, with regard to the four commissioners. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Chair. My clan would like to respond to the questions already.
Let us respond, then after that we take another set.
Chair, in my introduction, I'd like to state that I'm an advocate of the High Court of Kenya. That is what I do for a living. Secondly, I'd like to quote Warren Buffett, who said that when someone is sitting under shade, someone planted that tree long time ago.
If you can be better audible, please.
I'm quoting Warren Buffett, who said that someone sitting under shade means that someone planted that tree long time ago. I'm inspired by what others have done in improving our democratic space and ensuring that we have a, a country governed by the rule of law, whereby every person, every state officer, every individual given a duty to perform in a high office, in, in independent commissions and other higher ranking positions, should perform their duties in accordance with the law. We are aware that for this constitution 2010 that was promulgated, so many people suffered, so many people shed their blood. Some are still alive, they're still suffering. So that we gave ourselves this constitution. I'm inspired to say, by, by those actions and to say that in furthering the democratic space and good governance, I decided to pursue this route to ensure that when people are given such mundane duties to perform in independent offices whereby they are governed by the constitution and the law, they must perform them in tandem with the out of office and everything that pertains to that office. That is my inspiration, that is the reason why I moved when I realized that the actions of the commissioners, in my view, in my opinion, and my understanding as an advocate, were outside their mandate. They were performing their duties contrary to the law and the constitution. That's the end of my introduction. The second part is with regard to, is my counsel is confirming the, the name for Nyangaya. I want to state that the, the name for, um, Cherera is an error. And I believe that this committee being a post-it digital committee will not give any regard to technicalities. It's an error, but the name is Cherera, not Cherere. It was a typical error. My counsel is confirming Nyangaya, but I know Nyangaya is a commissioner, so the first name is going to be confirmed, I'll clarify that later. Number three, Article 251, where I grounded my prayers, I'll read the verbatim. "The National Assembly shall consider the petition, and if it's satisfied that it's disclosed as a ground that, under clause one, shall send the petition to the president." A proper reading of the whole of Article 251 informs us that, that the procedure, or informs us the procedure of removal of commissioners holding independent offices, or in independent offices or in commissions. That article at three, 251.3 mandates this committee, which is the parliament, parliament, the committee and parliament are doing the same thing. If they find that there are grounds that are cited, the threshold is met before the the petition to the president to appoint a tribunal. The whole reading of that article will guide, I'm sure Chair, I've seen most of our members are advocates. The whole reading of Article 251 is a clear point of that, at the end of these proceedings, if there is a finding that the grounds have been disclosed for removal of a commissioner, the duty of the committee and parliament is to forward the decision to the president to establish a tribunal. So the ground of Article 251 was where parliament performs its duty of forwarding the petition to the president to perform his constitutional duty. On this of media statements, I applied a duck test. If it swims like a duck, walks like a duck, walks like a duck, it's probably a duck. When people read similar things, their actions, their movements, their songs, their dancing are the same, they are probably reading from the same script. It can never be a coincidence. The media statements, the timing, for those who are following, I was following critically. Every step that was being taken, because the election, election of a president was a serious duty. We went to vote for all members of parliament and emcees, but the final one, which gave us long nights, counting, verification, was that of the president. I followed clearly, many Kenyans followed. And we saw that at the moment, the four commissioners that are cited were reading their statements. It could not take more than five minutes. It was actually systematically, even the TVs were sharing the screen to show the commissioners reading their statements. They're caressed by the Asimio group. It was a well-coordinated move. So the duck test will confirm that they are one and the same people, reading from the same script, probably even drafted by one person. At that level, you can draw inference. As somebody who understands what's, the movements of people, at the end of the day, you can draw an inference and say these activities cannot be by coincidence. I'm moving to the question on proxies. I request this committee to apply the circumstantial evidence principle. Based on the duck test, you can draw a nexus. The connection, the link can be seen. The clear action of the IBC commissioners from the day at the National Telling Centre, their movement from National Telling Centre to Serena, at the same time, there were activities by one function, which I can clearly say is Asimio, in trying to cause chaos at Bombers. They even issued statements, media statements, some few minutes, IBC commissioners are issuing statements. The following day, nearly the same time, they're issuing statements of similar nature. The percentages who are quoted as not, by Cherera and the other figures which were quoted by Raile Odinga were nearly the same in terms of saying that the, the presidential election has not reached the fifty plus one percent. The, the uncle, the lenses they had were the same. They were, they were saying the fifty plus one percent has not been, has not been achieved. The true president's statements had similar objectives. So there is a nexus, there's a link and there's a connection. Paragraph 10 on incompetence. Every officer, a senior officer at the level of a commissioner or even a vice-chairperson of a commission understands the, should or must understand the procurement procedures. A procurement procedure under the laws of Kenya, in all institutions, including parliament, are known. Somebody at the level of a commissioner cannot purport to appoint a law firm one night, which was not pre-qualified. That action means or shows us that there is lack of understanding or failure to comprehend the activities they were doing by appointing a law firm. It's incompetence. Division of incompetence can be confirmed from an ordinary dictionary. And it will show you that somebody who does not perform his functions successfully is an incompetent person. The, the appointment was nullified, the appointment of the law firm that, that they purported to have appointed was nullified. And they never, they were never represented by the law firm as commissioners of IBC, they were represented as independent individuals or individuals in their own capacity, not as IBC commissioners finally. There is also a question on procurement laws and procedures, I think by answering the incompetent question, I've answered the aspect of requirements for advertisement. In procurement laws, you have to advertise people, bring their qualifications or their bids. All those procedures are known, I'll not belabor so much on them.
Thank you, thank you Geoffrey. Let's take the next set of questions from my classification from the remaining three, Honorable Soro.
Thank you very much, Chair. I need, I'm, I'm happy that the petitioner is an advocate. And he can be able to respond to some questions. So I need some clarity, number one, whether the petitioner is a member of any political party. He could be here, you know, sent by a certain political party, just like he claims that some, the commissioners were biased. Possibly he's here to represent a certain political party. And as he confirms, of course, we'll have to check the status also to be sure that is, of that, that belongs to that party. Number two, it relies mostly, petitioner, you rely, your petition on Article 81, on the principles of electoral system, basic principles of electoral system. You rely on Article 3.2, where you claim, where, you know, with allegations that they are tempted to establish a government, otherwise, as the article of course provides, other than that, that is in compliance with the constitution. I need to know at what point did they, the four commissioners, you know, showed or rather displayed, you know, a direction that created a perception that they wanted to, you know, instill another government other than what is constitutionally provided, because that is where you've relied, you've placed your reliance on. Number three, section eighty-six, I mean, section twenty-six of the IBC Act, where you also rely on, you claim that they were taking directions from some quarters. In the entire story, besides the, the link that you display, you try, that you try to explain the link of press conference in Serena by the Cherera team and Asimio team. We, I want proof on being taken control by external forces. Does a presser display that they were under control? Is there a meeting that you have? Or a video CCTV that displays that they had a meeting somewhere? You know, with some outside quarters? And then they came out, I mean, really, we can't just say because they came out, because again, there is a, as I said with the, the other petitioner, there is a small, there's a thin line between freedom of expression under Article 33 and, and such, so we need to know how these people are getting directions. And also in section thirty, where now you want to place your case mostly in terms of their offenses, it provides for the obstruction. They tried, the perception you've placed before this committee is that the four commissioners wanted to obstruct the commission from discharging their duties. At what point were they obstructing? Did they succeed to obstruct? Eventually, they expressed themselves, but there was no obstruction. So how did they obstruct? At what stage did they obstruct? The particular four commissioners, and finally, on procurement. On procurement, I'll draw your attention on Article 227 of the constitution and on state organs and everything and how they do their procurement. We should be fair, equitable, as you know, transparent, competitive and cost-effective. And at this point, of course, at this very point of procuring the services of an advocate, you really can't say that they ought to have advertised the services of an advocate, because clearly they had to pick from the advocates that are pre-qualified, so the process of prequalification had already been done. So I want you to help me understand that what particular principle of procurement under Article 227 did they violate? Was it on fairness? Was it on equitability? Was it on transparency? Was it on competitiveness? Because if it was on competitiveness, then what happened on the other, you know, the other commissioners? Is it because they had no local standard to procure? And is it because they also felt that the other commissioners' choice of an advocate wasn't cost-effective? And they decided, of course, to engage a cost-effective system, which is one of the principles of procurement in terms of, you know, state officers procurement rules? Thank you very much, Chair.
Good, I hope you've noted that very well.
Yes, Chair, I think, just to request, that's it, the sets of questions are growing, I think, they're around six now, five, six.
You have had six from one person?
Around five, five.
Five from, from one person? You want to answer that?
Yes.
All right, thank you, then we will go to Eddie and John after that.
Chair, on the first part, indeed, like any other Kenyan citizen, I'm a member of a political party, and specifically UDA. In moving this committee through a petition, I'm not instructed by UDA or any other agent. I'm acting on my own capacity as a citizen who loves the rule of law, who cherishes good governance and democracy. Therefore, my, my being a member of a political party does not hinder me from proceeding to, to take an action that is allowed by the constitution.
Chair, Chair, just on that point, I think the petitioner should clarify whether he's an official of the UDA or a member with no, you know, he has no other responsibilities of being beyond membership, possibly, please?
Chair, I'm ordinarily, I'm an ordinary member of the party. I, I'm very sure my learned friend, who is a member of this committee, understands the categories of membership of a party. Therefore, there are those who are privileged at a higher level, like members, but I'm an ordinary member. So I do not have any other position where there is an official, and I've never performed any other official capacity in that party.
On the aspect of Article 3.2, an attempt to establish a government other than provided for in the constitution. The activities of which were witnessed at Bombers, the National Telling Centre, the chaos. I realize that Kenyans were anxious on my, on my part, actually, my heart skipped a beat. It was terrifying to see a chairperson of an independent commission being attacked physically. It was a way of asking other Kenyans to take arms. People belonging to his community could have risen and said, "Our person is being attacked." In, in the melee, and if, if that was to happen, another person of the country, because if an individual is attacked physically, because he belongs to a community, he's a family member, he's somebody of high, highly regarded in the society, an attack on that person. Another commissioners was a way of showing that the country should proceed to engage it on violence. It was an invitation by those who committed those acts to violence. And that one was preceded by the presser, or it was actually happening at the same time. I cannot tell you who was coordinating the activities, but behind the scenes, there must have been a coordinator. Attack the commissioners, make a press statement, let Kenyans be in a state of anxiety, put the country in anarchy. An attempt to establish that government outside the constitution can be achieved if there's anarchy, there's a state of lawlessness, violence everywhere. And at that point, the chairman was not to declare a result. There was a deadline. If the chairman was to be attacked to a level where he was not going to perform his duties, the next thing would be, there was no result. You cannot call the Supreme Court to challenge anything because there's no result. What did have happened? The term of the president has come to an end. Any other way of bringing in a government outside this constitution was supposed to have been activated as per what happened on that day. Another person outside Kenya were following the proceedings. Those who know what happens in terms of coups, they, most of them are holding their breath, because it was a moment which this country should never witness again. Section twenty-six of the IBC Act, that one can be read together with Article 249, because it's all about independence. Let me just read the verbatim, 249. 49.2, "The commissioners and the holders of independent offices are subject only to the constitution and the law. An independent cannot subject the direction or control by any person or authority." The way the commissioners were conducting themselves, the four commissioners, it was clear that they are not independent. I've, I've given so many instances on the connection, the nexus between them and other forces. I do not need to belabor so much, because an independent commissioner performs his duties independently as per the law and the constitution. The activities were well-coordinated, orchestrated by other people, which evidence may be adduced at a higher level. Or, because my understanding of the petition herein is that as per the procedures, there is a, the act governing, there was no need to attach a Navi David. Actually, I can quote section three of the Petition to Parliament Procedures Act 3. Okay. "A petition to parliament shall be in the form set out in the statute and shall, okay, not have any letters, Navi Davids or other documents next to it." The member, Chair, the member alluded to freedom of expression. We all have freedoms of expression, but depending on their capacity that you're holding, the office that you're holding, your freedom is limited and express yourself in an official capacity or acting in person. If the commissioners were to come out and declare that they were making statements in their personal capacity, they would have enjoyed fully their freedom of expression. Being members of the commission, they were governed by the IBC Act and all the relevant laws governing their activities and their operations. So their freedom of expression was limited to the extent that their activities, performance of duties and their official capacity should be limited to official press, press statements by a secretariat or the chairperson or any spokesperson that they have appointed as a commission. Section thirty on the offenses. Obstruction of the performance of duties of the commission or the chairperson or any person in the commission is a criminal offense. And I can read the section thirty, IBC Act. "A member or employee of the commission who knowingly supports the process of free and fair elections or willingly obstructs the commission in the discharge of its functions or otherwise interferes the functions of the commission commits an offense and is liable on conviction to a term of imprisonment, not exceeding three years or to a fine of not more than one million shillings or above." For that to be achieved, you don't need to be physically present. Obstruction can happen in so many ways, it can be physical or any other means. We saw physical obstruction, not by the members, I've quoted to be removed, but the actions and the activities of interfering, because the information by the chairperson that came out was that there were considerations before they moved to Serena. They were supporting tampering of the results and that in itself is also obstruction. There may not have been physical assaults on the chairperson by the commissioners, but all the activities compounded together result to obstruction of the performance of the commission action, of functions. The member, Chair, also requested me to address Article 227 on procurement. We all understand that being members of the committee, procurement functions falls to a secretariat. In parliament, there is a PSC that conducts the functions of ensuring that all members are properly resourced. It cannot be members of parliament to go and procure. In the same, in the same way, commissioners have delegated that duty, IBC commissioners gave the mandate to the secretariat who carries out all the procurement procedures and regulations. The commissioners could not wake up and say they have appointed a certain law firm. Therefore, the issues of whether it was transparent, it was cheaper or any other means do not arise.
Thank you very much. I think that answers it, let's hear folks.
Chairman, just for one clarification to tie before Wakili Moreo. Everything that you are saying, I understand you to be saying there is reasonable inferences can be drawn to show a pattern, to show these people were doing something. And you are also saying, I get you to be saying, and I wanted you to be clear whether this is your evidence, that they were, there was an attempt to subvert the popular will of the people, which as you know, as an advocate, is, is also reasonable. So that you, you, are you on record? That your evidence is that the commissioners attempted to subvert the popular will of the people, which is reasonable?
Yes, being an advocate, I think you understand the question. Yes, being an advocate, I think you understand the question.
Yes, but the wording that subversion of the will of the people is reasonable. I think we can go back and confirm from the Penal Code. Those are another words in the Penal Code. Therefore, I'll answer it this way. That is true. But I'm on record to say that they attempted to subvert the will of the people. The will of the people ends at the ballot. Any other action to diversify, to alter, to tamper with that decision on the ballot is actually subversion of the will of the people, because the will of the people is a democratic process. People exercise their democratic right to vote and to establish a government as per the Constitution. So any other person thinking, attempting, or performing any other activity to subvert the will of the people will have committed, will have violated the Constitution. Therefore, the wording of subversion of the will of the people is not, in the wording of the Penal Code, is not an acceptable offense.
Sorry, what have you said?
I'm saying...
Subversion of the will of the people is not...
The wording, if you can go and confirm the wording, but the Penal Code, the wording...
What is treason?
Treason? For instance, when someone tries to overthrow a sitting president, that is a treason. And at that time, they were not attempting to overthrow a sitting president. They were trying to subvert or to tamper with the decision of the people.
What would be the end result?
Violence, anarchy, yes.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Wakili Edward Moreo. He has a few questions to ask.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah. The petition has come up with a nexus theory. And as committee, we appreciate your persuasion that you are coming under Article 1 of the Constitution to support Article 251. And by that, I see the theory of nexus whereby all these commissioners, the four of them, the respondents, were appointed almost at the same time. By the sweep of your petition, you are seeking for the same four commissioners to be swept out of office at the same time. I would kindly clarify to us the nexus on why the four and not the rest. Number two. We have also connected in your testimony that these commissioners, there is going to be an element whereby, in the event the sitting three commissioners exit office in January 2023, the natural course will be one of the respondents will take over as a chair of the commission. With your petition here, what you're trying to persuade the committee is that you want by January 2023 not to have a single commission, commissioner in office. Kindly guide us, because as a responsible citizen and Article 1, and also I'm sure you're also student of Shakespeare in the March of Venice. If you want a pound of flesh, then you cannot spill the blood. And therefore, there will be a legal and constitutional crisis which you're trying to instigate. How do you mitigate that? Thank you, Chair.
Can I put... John, to put intervention, he answers both together.
Thank you. Article 251, under which you have brought this particular petition, sets out the grounds. And you have cited, one of the grounds is serious violation of the Constitution. That indicates that it is not just any violation of the Constitution that will lead to removal from the office. I have looked at your petition, and you have basically cited only three articles of the Constitution. Article 1, Article 2, Article 81E. I'm looking at those articles, and my question is this. The commission has seven commissioners, and you've raised issues about the performance of the commission. Why, in your view, would you fix the four commissioners and leave the rest of the other three commissioners? Or is your interest driven by what you have said at paragraph 29 of your petition? That the structure and composition of the commission will be dented if left to the four commissioners? Unimaginable how the commission will be run by reneged. You have already classified them as renegade commissioners. What is your finding of renegade commissioners? At paragraph 35, you have said "The heinous act of attacking the chairperson and other commissioners Boma's National Telling Centre in the full glory was meant to create national disaster." Do you have any videos, any of these four commissioners attacking people at Boma's Centre? Two. Freedom of expression is a hallowed concept in our Constitution. Freedom of expression and the right to hold opinions. Your petition is grounded by the pressers, which you say were given on that particular day. What is your take on the freedom of expression, the right to hold freedom of expression, alongside the grounds which you have cited? Because in my view, the commissioners were actually exercising the right to hold opinions, express opinions. What is your take on that? Then finally, you have made a blanket assertion at paragraph 32 that these commissioners were openly working with one party in the 2022 election, and thus openly biased. You will agree with me that an election is a process. Is a process, but you have made a blanket assertion that in the whole of the 2022 general election, they were openly working with one team. I need a clarification basically on that. And then finally, finally, there are sanctions, criminal sanctions imposed by Section 30 of the IBC Act, that if you want to subvert the will of the people, there are criminal sanctions that are applied to that. Have you taken advantage of those other avenues that are provided before taking this avenue of bringing this petition here? Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Manjofi, you may now take that. You may just respond to that side.
I'll start by quoting or reading Proverbs 28:1. "Which says, 'The wicked flee even when no one pursues them; but the rations are bold like a lion.'" That takes me to answer the question on removal of the four commissioners and not the rest. Their movement, their indecision is expressed by the chairperson in his statements that there was an issue concerning the outcome of the results. And the four commissioners were not agreeing to the chairperson to proceed according to the law. And they moved to do their action of reading a presser. They were running away from the cardinal duty that they were given to perform. They did not want to follow the law. They wanted the love of the jungle to take its course. That in itself is a sign that the commissioners were not ready to abide by the Constitution. Giving me the mandate as a citizen of this country and a person, that Article 251 gives me that mandate to move the parliament after looking at the four commissioners and not the other three, who remained boldly to perform their cardinal duty to declare the result and deliver this country from the upsets or from the quackmire that were in at the time. It was the boldness of the three commissioners that kept this country on the right path. The issue of a crisis, constitutional crisis. At 10 times, we must or we will find ourselves certain crises. This will not be the first crisis. If it will happen, it will not be the first or the last. And there's always a way out of the crisis. We were in a crisis 2008. We found our way out. Now, at that time, it was a bigger crisis concerning the leadership, the president. We had a prime minister so that we solved the issue. Now we are looking at the IBC commission. There is no impending general election at the corner. What you know is around the corner is the issue of the elimination of the boundaries. I'm aware that there is a vacancy which has been advertised for the three commissioners who are exiting. Therefore, the process of appointing them may or will kick off immediately. And we'll have commissioners. If the four will be removed by the tribunal and confirmed by the president, the process of appointing others will kick off. The crisis of having no commissioner will cross the bridge when you come to it. But at the moment, you must put the country on the right path.
As you answer the question, you are also aware that there are by-elections that are supposed to be conducted by the commission tied to it.
As you speak, there are dates for the by-elections. Most of them are in December. I'm not aware whether there is another one in January, February. They have not been advertised or communicated. But once in December, the commissioners will be in the office. There are 30 days for the other procedures to be followed. Parliament is not done. So the commissioners will perform their duties as they will be at the office at that time. They will be in office. So the by-elections will be conducted successfully. Unless any other by-election comes, we'll cross the bridge when we come to it.
Chairman, the respondent, when you say that you cross the bridge when you get there, don't you think that's a statement of carelessness? Because this country will be thrown in crisis, because there are a number of activities happening. The commission is not an ad hoc commission. They are work proceeding, and you have nipped the bud of the head whereby you've removed the entire commissioners from office. Don't you find that that's maybe an act of carelessness?
Chair, I mentioned that just to answer, the member. I mentioned that at the moment, the process of appointing the other commissioners will kick off. The four, the three, I'm not sure whether they are on terminal leave, should be out by January, and the process of appointing them will kick off. We don't even know when the removal of the four will come to an end. We do not have a definite date at the moment. Maybe by the time they'll be removed, the other three will be in office. That's why I said, we'll cross the bridge when we come to it. A constitutional crisis may come. This will not be the first one, and if it happens, others will happen. And a situation nearby, all the commissioners die in office. Will you say there is no commission? They may all die in one day. What will you say the following day?
That's a little bit presumptuous, but...
Nature, God forbid, God forbid.
They're dying, I don't know in what, all of them one day. All right, thank you very much. Just continue with your responses, please.
There's your videos. I quoted the Section 3 of the Parliamentary Procedures Act. No, let me just petition, Petition to Parliament Procedures Act. That is a requirement to avail evidence to this committee in form of a davit or a nexture. Therefore, if there are videos that I have as evidence, it will be adduced most probably at a different level.
Chair, sorry, but our question was really, we don't ask him to produce a modus. Does he have that kind of evidence, even if he can't produce it to us because of our mandate and our limitations?
Chair, with respect to the specific question on commissioners attacking fellow commissioners, there is no video. I do not have it with me. And even in the higher level, I cannot produce such a video, because they did not perform that act. Expression, freedom of expression. I had initially answered it, but I can proceed to answer because the member also put it up. I've categorized the freedoms and said, freedom of expression belongs to all of us. The constitution grants us the right to make opinions. I can make opinion, I can say anything that I like, as long as I am not offending anyone. That's a limitation in itself, because if I make statements that are going to cause chaos, that's a limitation. As commissioners, their statements while performing the function of a commission is limited to official communication, my understanding. Official communication of the commission, officials of the commission. And if they do not agree, it can be recorded in their own boardrooms. They have a way of dealing with and gathering issues of disagreements in decision-making. It was the first time for us to witness commissioners coming out to make such statements in the press. I'm very sure your own parliamentary service commission have their ways of dealing with issues that are not agreeable. They cannot come to the media and tell us their issues. Chair, the freedom we are looking at, and we are aware that the Constitution provides that rights can be limited as far as this is agreeable in a democratic society. The limitations I've mentioned are and should be to protect the independent institutions. Therefore, if you allow freedom of expressions and opinions in serious offices in the nature of IBC, we will not see good governance, we will not see progress. We will not make progress as a nation. We will always be in quackmires, we will always be having the crisis, the constitutional crisis, because one day, this group will say, "We disagreed, we are leaving office." The other one can also come and say, "We are also leaving office," because they've disagreed on something. There are procedures of dealing with disagreements, and they can iron out in their boardroom, failure to which they have procedures of dealing with them. Opinions and expressions that are likely to cause violence, that are likely to cause anarchy should not be undertaken and should be desired to it as by the law and the Constitution. The aspect of being openly biased. My petition in its entirety is limited to the declaration of the results in the aftermath. The entire reading of my petition did not go to the employment, the time they came to office and all the activities that they did before the elections. I have premised my petition on the activities of National Telling Centre, the press statements at Serena, the president and KICC, and all the activities put together. But I did not mean, and the entire reading can guide the committee to show that I did not mean they were openly working together for the entire election period. They were working together at that period with intent to cause chaos, as I've stated earlier, and to subvert the will of the people. The sanctions under Article 30. I've cited that section to show the seriousness of the violations that the commissioners breached the law, the Constitution. The aspect of being charged in a court of law belongs to another forum. I have not reported or complained to the police. I don't have an hobby to that extent. But my purpose was to show that they obstructed, they performed activities which could have led to non-declaration of results. So therefore, the police also have a mandate in their own capacity to investigate. And on my personal capacity, I have not reported, I don't have an hobby. But my intention was to show the extent of violations, serious violations. But my intention was to show the extent of violations, serious violations by the commissioners.
So your clarification is that you have not moved any other agency? This is the first you're trying to move.
Yes, yes, Chair.
Are you through with your responses to all the questions?
Yes, I believe I'm done.
Basically, you are through.
Okay. There was one aspect that we were in the process of clarification. Because of the engagements with the questions, I have not confirmed the full name of Nyangaya, Commissioner Nyangaya. I'm just confirming in a minute.
You're still confirming?
Yes.
All right, in the meantime, as we wind up, let's hear from Honorable Kusia. I think he wants one more clarification.
Yeah, just a small clarification, Mr. Langat. From your statement and from your petition and also from what you have told us, it seems like you are connecting quite a bit of these commissioners to one side of the political divide. You seem to have a problem with them having to be on the same side in the petition that was at the Supreme Court. In fact, you highlight how Commissioner Julius Nyangaya, in his capacity as the chair of ICT Committee, was able to access and supply articulums in support of that petition. Do you feel like there is a connection between that and, between, do you feel like there is a connection between the four commissioners and that one particular side of the political divide that you are alluding to? And that in yesterday's presentation by petitioners, again, the bigwits of that political party or that political coalition were also seen to be in support of the four commissioners. Did you kind of now think there is a connection between their appearance and the support of the four commissioners and what was happening before the election, during the election, and after the election in the Supreme Court of Law?
What are your thoughts on that?
Chair, my petition as it is now concerns the activities just after the election and during the petition. What happened yesterday, it's for the committee to draw an inference because everybody, they were present. The nexus, the committee will make addition on that concerning yesterday. But the link that I was bringing out was at that time. And maybe what happened yesterday could just be the last nail in the coffin.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have confirmed, Chair, sorry.
You have confirmed the name? The name is who?
Justice Nyangaya, not Julius Nyangaya. The name Julius and Justice in pronunciation.
So your petition relates to a commissioner by the name Justice Nyangaya? I wish to make that clarification.
Yes, Justice Nyangaya.
And you had also a Cherera somewhere?
I'd clarified that it is Cherera.
You clarified it is Juliana Cherera?
Yes, Chair.
And not what, so what do you ask this committee to do now as regards those corrections?
I'd like the committee to adopt my corrections and to have the name to read Juliana Cherera and Justice Nyangaya. It is not a salia typed in my petition. If the committee submits.
Thank you, we have noted that. Now, a few minutes to cancel. But I caution him really whether he has anything to say. We didn't know initially that your client is an advocate. We know how difficult it is to represent an advocate. Because soon you'll be stopped on your tracks that what you are saying is not what he wants you to say, all right? And that he would have said it differently away from what you're saying. But with all that, because you cancel, we give you 10 minutes to make a sum up.
Yes, thank you, Chair and honorable members. I am quite humbled by my client's confirmation on issues touching on this petition. He has been very articulate, and I think the commission has noted almost everything. All the answers, I believe, are with the commissioners we talk. I would just wish to pray and submit that this commission, committee do find that the commissioners listed as Irene Masid, Juliana Cherera, Francis Wandere, and Justice Nyangaya committed serious violation of the constitution and the law and even contravened Chapter Six of the constitution. I wish to pray as well as part of the petition that this committee do find that the IBC commissioners Irene Masid, Juliana Cherera, Francis Wandere, and Julius, Justice Nyangaya are guilty of these gross violations and that to also find that the IBC commissioners, namely Irene Masid, Juliana Cherera, Francis Wandere, and Justice Nyangaya are incompetent to hold the offices, the office of the commissioners of IBC and therefore recommend to parliament that the president do constitute a tribunal to investigate and take evidence as per the law and remove them from office. Thank you, Chair, thank you, members. Thank you for listening to our client, thank you for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Advocate Nelson Motai. I think we have heard you in full. Unless there is anybody who says there are segments that are left out. We've had what you have to say to support your petition. We have heard your prayers to the committee, which prayers will have to be sent to the National Assembly for the National Assembly to make its decision in one way or the other. So we thank you very much for the presentations. And unless there is anything else to be said. Yeah. Yes, unless there is anything else to be said, we will bring your representations to a close at this level. But we got to advise you, Wakili and client, that on Monday and Tuesday, we have allocated time for the respondents, the four commissioners to appear before us so that they can also make their own representations in compliance with the rules of natural justice that we must afford every one of them a fair hearing. So during that hearing, you're welcome to come and cross-examine them just in case you feel it is necessary. It will be at 10 o'clock and again at 2:00 PM and on Tuesday from 10 o'clock and again at 2:00 PM to cover the four persons you have named as respondents. So you are welcome to come and present your cross-examination questions during that time. So with those remarks, we now confirm that you are discharged and you may leave the chambers as it pleases you. Thank you. There is also, I'm told there is a cup of tea somewhere. Not by us, but by the House of Parliament. So you don't have to feel, it's a committee offering the tea. It's parliament that is offering the tea in consonance with its practices that continuously it has to entertain its guests using taxpayers' money. It's not our money. So it is your own money. You can have a cup of tea as you exit the chamber. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, members. Have a good day.
They are convening at 12:00, isn't it? At 12:00. All right, honorable members and the members of the press. That brings us to the close of this morning's session. The next session is at 2:00 PM. So we will convene here at 2:00 PM sharp to hear the fourth petitioner as we have programmed, as we put in the schedule, and as we advertised out there. So you may take your break now to come back at 2:00 PM. Thank you very, very much. Let's meet at that particular time. The session stands adjourned.